All right, so an RFP was issued, you know, a request for proposals was sent out to retain a firm, to assist the city with compliance, implementation, and leveraging these dollars. The key is we wanted, our scope of services included best tapping into these, the ARPA funding, you know, look at all streams and programs, there's not just this one pot of money the city's receiving, right? The full ARPA legislation is 1.9 trillion dollars. So, you know, we have our 94 million, but let's also look at, are there other funds out there that we can use and leverage these dollars further? Key thing is, you know, assist us with calculating revenue loss and ensure that's within compliance. Assess internal controls. I believe when I was going through the waiting period to become CFO, Mr. Mays, Councilman, President Mays had mentioned, let's look at our internal controls, let's look at policies, procedures. They can help us do that to ensure that these dollars are spent properly and that they're managed properly in the future. Some more of the scope of services. One of the big things is we, as you all know, there's the U.S. Treasury interim final rules out there that we have to follow, but let's also not forget, we have to ensure that we're in compliance with federal regulations, you know, so to be exact, sorry, I got like six pages of notes, so bear with me while I flip. Well, all right, it's in there someplace. Anyway, there's federal regulations, you know, of how you manage grant dollars that we have to make sure that we're in compliance with. So of those, after the RFP was issued, we did receive eight proposals. The list of all eight companies is in your packets. So we then looked at that and said, look, we want to partner, right? We want to make sure that you're not just going to come in here and make sure that we file the right report and that we'll never see you again. You know, help us work with the community to ensure that the residents' dollars are spent equitably and transparently. So, you know, what kind of dashboards are you going to have? What kind of, you know, if the council wants to look at a dashboard on how we're spending these dollars, do you have stuff like that available? We wanted to make sure that, we wanted to work with one partner, right? We didn't want to reach out and partner with a firm and then they're going to subcontract with three other firms that we got to keep track of, or do I talk to this firm, or which person do I talk to, right? One partner that knows how complacency works. ENY really stood out, I mean, they're, you know, working with hundreds of communities in 36 different states. They're a big four accounting firm, you know, their bread and butter is compliance, right? They're going to make sure that, you know, we received 94 million dollars with a bunch of hooks on it, so we better get it right and we better make sure they're spent right because we don't want to have those dollars clawed back, as all of you have mentioned, the public's mentioned. So in assessing the firms, we looked at four that we really liked. We reached out to those four and said, look, this is the residents' dollars, you need to sharpen your pencils, and we want to see, you know, explain us further. How do you define compliance? How do you define implementation? How do you see these dollars being spent? So we received three back of the four, one was a week late, and that's really how we got down to ENY. They're one firm, they're not subcontracting out. This is their, you know, this is their day-to-day job is compliance. They talked about, like I said, there's not just the 94 million the city's received, there's FEMA dollars out there that are separate, that the city can receive, and bottom line, they're going to make sure that, you know, we spend these dollars right, that we are in compliance. As far as costs go, if you read the 243-page law itself, not the interim final rules, but the actual legislation that was passed, it allows for up to 10% to be captured for administrative costs. Their proposal came in about 4.2% of the 94 million. And again, it's key that ENY is going to be looking at the whole picture. For example, you know, there are other, like I said, there's other dollars out there that we can leverage with our dollars to help the community even more, to make this 94 million go further. So essentially, yield more than 94 million and leverage these dollars, and that's how we got here and why we're proposing, recommending ENY.
Turn my mic off. So if we, it was the bidding process, or is that, was it a different process?
Yes, it was following our purchasing ordinance. We issued a RFP, you know, not a request for bids, but a request for proposals to manage, but yes.
So if we wanted to go with someone else, could we, or it had to have been through this process? Like, say we found someone cheaper after this, is that possible?
Well, if it's, I mean, if you approve this, you know, the resolution before you, then, you know, that's the firm we're going with, if that answers your question.
I'm just asking, in hypotheticals, if we don't pass this because some may say there's somebody cheaper out there, would we be able to do that, given this process?
Yeah, if you're asking, are you absolutely locked in and you have to go with our recommendation? I mean, it's our recommendation, and we've done our due diligence to give you the best firm out there, but no one's saying you shall pick this firm.
Do you know of any congressional offices that agreed to be unpaid consultants?
Congressional office? I have not heard of that.
Okay. I've just heard word that some have thought maybe we could get help for free, such as Dan Kildey's office. And I called Chris Flores in Dan Kildey's office and said, you know, can we save money on this? That seems to be important, and would you be able to willing, be willing to help out? And he said there was absolutely no way that they could get involved or help us, so this is more just for the council to know that I did look into that, and there's absolutely no way. I had a lengthy conversation with him, and they're responsible for many cities that all have to go through this process. So there is no free consultant firm out there right now.
Yeah.
So we had to do this process to see who would put in their proposals and pick the right firm. If we did not use a compliance firm, and I want to make it very clear that I am absolutely in favor of it, because as Ms. Lewis said earlier, we have to pay this money back if we do not do this correctly. But if someone says we could save money by doing it on our own, do we have the staff to do that?
No. I mean, let's play this out. So if I may, you know, these are specialized dollars for specialized use, you know, these are new rules created just for these dollar sizes, and, you know, accounting rules have been on the books for 20 years. These are new rules developed just for this specialized award, the specialized grant. So we need a specialized company to maintain compliance. I'll be honest with all of you, we are two years strong, finally, without having the state run our finance department. We are two years strong in building up our finance department to where it should have been years ago, without the state running our finances. So this finance department, as has been mentioned, is focusing on investing in our pension systems to decrease our annual pension payment and to stabilize the overall finances for the city for generations to come. To be able to, so I stumbled there early, I couldn't think of the second rule. So it's the CFR Part 200, so that's the Code of Federal Regulations. So not only do we have to follow the interim final rules, which we know are changing, could change daily, we also have to make sure we're following the federal regulations. So for the finance team to be focused on every single regulation out there to ensure we don't accidentally retain, you know, spend these dollars in a certain way that doesn't meet compliance and then have to pay it back. I mean, bottom line, let's say we grant a company X a million dollars to respond to the pandemic, right? And they don't use it properly, Company X doesn't owe the federal government a million dollars, we owe the federal government a million dollars. And that's the key of why we need a compliance firm in place.
Yeah. And how many pages did you say?
Well, the interim final rules, they have managed to squeeze three pages onto one. It's beautiful, it's really, you know, big font. Yeah, well, the newer ones are even columned out beyond that. Those are, those are around 34 pages. The actual law itself is 243 pages, and I don't off the top of my head how long the Part 200 of the federal regulations are.
We are talking a lot
A lot.
of work to get this right.
Yeah.
And I did put, I had our secretaries, thank you, put the compliance reporting guidance in your mailboxes, and it's 32 pages long. This isn't an easy task, and I just want to make that clear. This is important because, as we all know, sometimes you have to spend money to make money and to put it to good use. And I also heard Mr. Whitigan say that this company would help us find more dollars and not just go with what we have. So I think it's a, it's a good idea that we hire this compliance firm. I'll have more questions. I also wanted to speak with Ms. Wilcox, but I'll open it up to my colleagues.
Mr. Whitigan, how are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Good. So I'm disappointed in this proposal, and I'll tell you why. There are other municipalities that are smaller than ours that don't have 57 people in finance and administration that are doing it on their own. There are municipalities that are using consulting firms, and I appreciate Councilwoman Worthing sending news articles of these local municipalities that are using these firms, and they are paying 1.5%, and yet we are paying 4.2% according to this proposal. Is there a reason, is Ernst &amp; Young that much better than what Oakland County is using for, a consultant, than Royal Oak is using for a consultant? What extra are we getting for the 3-some percent, or the $3 million in this proposal?
So I've read over Oakland County's proposal, and I wish Genesee County had the funds Oakland County did to do this. It seems like they have gone out and retained their own team of multiple firms, and they're letting the municipalities within Oakland County piggyback off of that. One of the firms they're using is Ernst &amp; Young. Another firm they're using is Guide House, who did submit a bid. However, their bid didn't break, didn't give us a total, like a not-to-exceed amount, like Ernst &amp; Young's did. Their bid was hourly rate, so it was very clear.
So before you jump off of that schedule,
Yeah.
do we anticipate this taking someone more than 26,000 man-hours to regulate these funds?
I anticipate that this contract, you know, as the contract's written, it will not to exceed the 3.9 million. So if it does exceed what they're, you know,
So if we were to, if we were to hire this, and if we were to bring folks internally, do we think that it would take more than 26,000 man-hours to complete this process?
So two issues with that that I see. One, this is a one-time shot in the arm, and we got to get it right.
Yep. And that's, and that's my point, because
Right.
I don't want see, I don't want dollars coming into this community and out the back door. So that's my, that's my main point here.
So, and I agree with you. Two things I want to make clear. One, this company's, part of this company's job is to go out and leverage more dollars than what we've received, for one. Two, this is one-time dollars, which should be spent for one-time uses. So if we were to retain staff, the dollars are done in, you know, a few years.
Don't, don't we hire people under contract bases every day?
So then at the end of that, three years, we basically say, there's the door, because the dollars are gone, right?
Well, aren't there, aren't there contract people that we hire and that we'd have on staff right now that are, that are term or, you know, time-certain to their departure?
We do have contract people on staff.
So how would that be any different?
Well, for one, we need to make sure who we're hiring, they need to be extremely thorough with these rules.
Correct.
The next thing about ENY is they have a big team behind them. So if I ask, this is Brian, by the way, if I ask Brian, or if council, you know, sends me a question for Brian, and he doesn't know, he has an entire team behind him to say, I'll get back to you and figure it out. If we hire, I mean, what, three staff with these dollars, that's it. They have to know everything. This is an entire firm that can use their resources to make sure we get the right answer. I mean, they have people literally sitting in DC that can get us the answers we need.
So if we allocated all of these funds for, you know, the top four things, whether it be water, infrastructure, pandemic payments for first responders, you know, if we, if we just, say if we just allocated all of these funds to those two categories, would we need a compliance firm?
I would still say yes, because unless I'm just going to straightforward put a pipe in the ground, you know, a water pipe in the ground, I mean, anything, any way you spend this, so the feds are going to look at it from the start to the end, right? So they're going to look at the procurement process, and our procurement process better match up with their procurement process, otherwise the funds might not be eligible to use. So I mean, it gets so finite with the feds that this is the best way to make sure we aren't paying back any dollars.
Do we handle federal dollars and work under federal guidelines every day for grants and other monies that come into this community, without outside assistance?
The city is always receiving federal dollars and state dollars, but
And we handle those internally, correct?
Smaller amounts, yes.
Over the course, over the course of the past, you know, few years, how much dollars do you think we've got that we've had to handle internally that came from the federal government that we haven't had outside assistance from?
I don't have that information right in front of me.
Millions? Would you say millions?
I would think, yes, that would be a safe wager.
Okay. So if we handle this in smaller chunks, because we have several years to deploy these dollars, couldn't we handle that internally? If, because, you know, if we, if we look at the interim guidelines, which I've read cover to cover, and there are easy categories, and categories that we would need as a community to better ourselves, why do we need a compliance firm? Why do we need to spend $4 million to have somebody spend, tell us where exactly where we need to spend it, when we know exactly we need to spend it?
So they're not going to just tell us where to spend the money, right? Like, they're going to
Right, they're going to do compliance reports.
But they're also going to leverage to get us more money, more bank for our bucks. So the 94 million, I would hopefully, in four years, I can stand in front of you, was well above 94 million that we put out into the community for long-term stability in the city of Flint.
So you're telling me Ernst &amp; Young is going to pay for themselves several times over? Is that what I'm hearing?
I cannot say how much money they will bring in, but I'm saying, one of their jobs is to bring in more.
So are you, how do you know that it will bring any additional matching dollars in?
Well, we only have a contract with them, and they've already helped out and pointed to a pool of money in FEMA, and just said, hey, by the way, there's FEMA money out there that we're looking into applying for. I mean, it's, there's money out there, but we don't have the staff or the resources to know every single pool of dollars out there.
So my point is, if we brought this in-house and had people in that were specific to compliance or chasing these dollars, wouldn't it be more beneficial for the community and cost us less in the overall?
I do not believe so. And one reason is, you know, we are not moving forward or moving any money, ARPA dollars, besides for this firm, without complacency piece in place. Right now, we have posted and financed multiple times just to hire a assistant for our payroll coordinator. I mean, you're talking probably three, four, five months to get the staff, internal staff built up to even begin
Well, no offense, but we got these funds in June, I believe, and it's been six months, and we have a $4 million proposal, so obviously, time is not of the essence. So what's, I would rather delay it another four months or five months, rather than this community lose out on $4 million.
So it, we did receive the money back in the summer, but, you know, I apologize for the turnover in the finance team, but you now have a permanent CFO that's dedicated to getting these dollars out in the community.
Have you reviewed the compliance and reporting forms as far as what is required when we, when we spend these dollars?
I have.
Are they, do you understand them? Are they, are they too complex for, I don't know, I'm not an accountant, I'm asking you. Are they, are they, could you fill those out personally? Are they too complex for, I believe you have an accounting degree or equivalent, are they too compliant or too complex for yourself?
They are not too complex for myself, it is a matter of time. So again, we are facing a $17 million structural deficit, and I would assume, and I am assuming, that that would be one of the focal points that the council would like me to focus on.
Absolutely.
So beyond that, then I am, would be reading hundreds of pages worth of complacency to make sure we hit every deadline. Good example is they just changed one of the deadlines on us. It was supposed to be due in September, then they kicked it to October, and I think they even changed it again after that. So to have one person
You're speaking of, you're speaking of the quarterly report?
One of the reports, yeah. I mean, so that's the thing, you have dozens of different reports due, the rules are changing constantly, we need to make sure that we have a team dedicated to just focusing on what's due, when it's due. Are there other dollars out there we can leverage? And is the city in compliance that we don't have to pay back any additional funds?
But you can't tell us if we're, if we're going to be able to leverage dollars, right? It's a, it's a selling point, right? It's a, it's a goal, right? But we can't, we don't know if that's going to come true?
If I understand you right, you're asking if I can tell you now that we will leverage a different, additional dollars in the future?
Correct.
I cannot tell you how much we're going to leverage in the future, but that is the goal, one of the goals of this company.
So none of the other companies had this same goal?
A lot of the companies had a goal of leveraging dollars. They, most of the time, we found that their resources weren't as vast as what ENY represents.
Have you, in a perfect world, have you looked at, I know that manpower is not really readily available, have you personally looked at a cost analysis of, have you brought a proposal, even even in the back of your mind, of how many people we would need to hire if this was internally?
So are you asking, have I assessed how many people we would need to hire to do this ourselves internally?
Correct.
At the least, we need three to five additional people, at the very least, and that might be a low figure.
So, because, and I know I'm taking a long time, because there are certain categories that this community definitely needs, and I feel like we don't need help in the categories of spending it, we would need help in the reporting aspect of it. And you're saying three to five people, full-time, over the next five years, the duration of this project, is what we would need for reporting?
And compliance. I mean, compliance is key. Like, we have got to ensure, again, so let's say we send dollars out to a third-party nonprofit, right? So, you know, we're going to have to risk-assess them. Are they spending the dollars right? We might have to look at their finances. Is it going towards the workers that need it, or is it going towards their administration? I mean, that's all part of what we have to do, because again, if that company misuses the dollars or doesn't spend it within compliance, within the rules, we owe the money back, not the company. You know, so that's, to have staff to police it, make sure we're in compliance, make sure the reporting's done properly and on time, yeah, you're talking a lot of staff.
So
That we're going to have to let go at the end.
Sure, sure. Could, I just want to touch base on a few things, Madam Chair, and then I'll give up the floor. Phoenix, Arizona, just as just one instance, Phoenix, Arizona, got $400 million, right? They got roughly four times what we got, and they are spending $4 million for, on their compliance and reporting. So I find it very difficult to think that we can't do better than what the community has for times the amount of money to report in compliance regulations on. Why do we spend the exact same dollar amount for a community with four times the ARPA funds? And I'll give up the floor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Whitigan?
I want the floor. I just didn't know if Mr. Whitigan wanted to answer that question.
Did you want to answer, Mr. Whitigan?
Was that, were you looking for an answer on that, or?
That was more of a statement, but if you want to
No, I assumed there was a statement, so that's why I said.
Okay, no problem. Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Councilwoman.
Yep, I don't have nearly as many questions. Finance is not my forte, but I do have a couple of questions. So you said that this RFP process must also follow the purchasing ordinances, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that this was opened in the public in compliance with City Code Article 4, Section 18215.
Yes, and I can, so the proposals were publicly open in person and on Google Meet, actually, so you had the option of both, on August 24th at 1:00 PM. There were multiple individuals from some of the firms. We also had our purchasing manager and someone from the clerk's office present.
Okay, thank you. And then another question that I had was, in the initial numbers that we have for all of these different bidders, the number from Ernst &amp; Young is different than the total before council today. Can you speak to that, please?
Absolutely. So what you see there, you know, that range from $7 million was one of the highest, but the ones from Ernst &amp; Young, as I had mentioned a little earlier, there was four firms we focused on, and when we, when we called them up to say, we want to talk further, we'd like your additional information, but I also made it clear, you need to sharpen your pencils. This is, again, public dollars and, and, you know, I didn't say how much, I just said, let's see, what can you do better? Give us your best and final.
So it was just them tightening the purse strings, if you will?
It was them tightening, yes.
Okay. And then I guess the final question that I have is, by utilizing the services of a compliance firm, do you think that this could save the city from potential lawsuits from noncompliance?
Madam Chair, Ms. Ali, could you speak closer to the mic? I'm having a hard time dissecting what you're saying.
Yep, so I'll repeat my question. So it was by utilizing a compliance firm, Mr. Whitigan, do you think that this could save the city from potential lawsuits for noncompliance?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I was on a call one day with, I believe it was the U.S. Conference of Mayors, obviously I'm not a mayor, but I was there representing my former boss, and Mayor Duggan from Detroit spoke, and he said, let me tell you a little story. Detroit received billions of dollars to a demo of light, demo, you know, houses, lighted houses and whatnot. We did not get a complacency firm. We got a call from the White House when President Obama said, you're welcome for the money, but we're taking it back. Detroit then had to scramble and find a complacency firm to make sure that those dollars were then used properly going forward before they could get the dollars back. I do not want to see that happen in the city of Flint. And we are not inclined to submit resolutions for further spending without a complacency firm checking them over. They're already checking on their dime what we've drafted, you know, we've met with staff to talk about premium pay, but without a complacency firm to say, you're good, these should not be subject to recruitment, you know?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have one question.
Yes.
On that, is the compliance firm, I just have this one question, is the compliance firm going to assume the liability if they are incorrect?
If it's okay, I'd like to defer that to the, to the compliance firm present.
I couldn't hear that answer.
I said if it's okay with him, I'd like to defer to the firm itself instead of answering on their behalf.
And so that gentleman here is from the firm?
Sir, could you please place, state your name and the firm that you're with?
Of course, yes. Can you hear me? Brian Jarzinski, Managing Director with Ernst &amp; Young.
Thank you.
So I'll repeat my question. If the So, I'll repeat my question, if the Treasury comes back to us and says, um, "You misallocated these funds, you misspent them, and they went through your firm and approved them," are you taking liability and are you going to reimburse the Treasury?
So, n- no, we will not take full, I like if, if they came back and said, "Hey, ten million dollars of these funds were misspent," our role is to confirm compliance with the standards of the TCFR and so forth, but we would not pay the ten million dollars back.
So, if, if they went through your process and you said, "It's good to go," we went through the whole thing, Treasury comes back to us in twenty-twenty-seven and says, "These mon- these monies were misallocated, monies that the compliance firm approved," said, "Yes, you're good to spend, however Treasury says no for some technicality," there's no recourse back to Ernst &amp; Young on behalf of the community?
The recourse back from the community would be up to our fee limitation, is, is what we've got.
So, your, your liability that you're willing to put on the line is up to this four million dollars of the costs, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes. And, and to be clear, on the four million dollars, it's not a four million dollar contract, that's our not-to-exceed, we would be billing you for the work we do. For example, uh, if you did use an infrastructure program-
I really can't hear, I really can't hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes, a lot better.
So, for example, if, if you, if you did push it into, say, two or three distinct programs that were a little simpler and perhaps didn't involve things like sub-recipients and, and, uh, third parties that were distributing the funds, the amount of compliance and investigation that's necessary and monitoring would be less. So, does that make sense?
Sure. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Unless anyone else wants to speak? Okay, go ahead.
I have my own questions. Mr. Whitaker, what kind of overhead, um, in addition to the expense for Ernst &amp; Young would we incur? What are our expenses?
On the ci- like, on the citizen?
For the city?
So-
Do you have an estimate?
I do not have an estimate before me, um, but that would fall under administrative costs.
Right.
So, we, it could be eligible, uh, if it were to get substantial, it could be eligible for, uh, reimbursement from these funds.
All right, but that's not what I asked. How much do we, because I, I'm, let me clarify, I am a grant accountant and I understand the overhead and things, and I understand that some of our overhead may not be covered necessarily, but in addition to the cost for Ernst &amp; Young, how much does the city expect to pay in our own staffing expenses, overhead, et cetera, so that we know what the total cost of that overhead would be, that would be charged to that, ten percent? Is that what the, the number is?
Up to, yeah. Uh, see, I don't have an exact accounting of that before me, but we are tracking it. So, if, if we are spending any staff time on it, it will be tracked.
But we don't know how much of that staff time's going to happen?
Co- correct, hopefully minimal, because we're getting the compliance firm, right?
Oh, right, okay. And the other question I have is, do you know in the past five years how much money that the city of Flint has turned back to the federal government for either non-compliance of grants or non-expenditure of grant funding?
I don't have that in front of me, but I'm writing your question down, I will, uh, report back.
Madam Chair, through you, could we find out if Suzanne have any bigger money of that nature?
Absolutely.
Ms. Wilcox, do you know of any money we've had to return over the last five years? Ms. Priestley had that question about federal money.
Um, I do not have that figure in front of me, I can say that we have had to return funds for non-compliance, which is why it's so important, but I do not have a total figure. Many of the dollars that were returned were for old projects that we have been working on cleaning up for the past several years, so there have been some repayments, and I can get you that figure, but I don't have it right now.
My understanding is it could, but in some cases, it was quite substantial recordance to the grant in relationship to that, that we did not spend the money properly.
We do have some old projects, um, you might recall hearing about some home projects from many years ago, um, that the city has been working on cleaning up over several years, and that is, that's something that happened, you know, some of them over twenty years ago. We are close to, if not complete, with, uh, cleaning up all of those projects, but it was a substantial amount.
Ms. Priestley, if I may, I've been here for eight years and I don't know of a substantial amount in the last five years, so I'll wait to hear if I missed anything. So, I'm just telling you, I haven't really heard of a substantial amount, it might stick out in my peanut head, but I just don't know right now, but we'll wait to see.
Also, I know as a, um, in my pers- in my professional history, I have worked very closely with, um, consultants in regards to federal regulations, and even though I was considered to be the expert on, um, this program, I didn't have all the answers. And in a couple of cases, I made mistakes and we had to pay back money. So, um, you know, relying on the experts are a good thing. Um, the big thing is to keep that percentage of the total dollars down. Um, another thing to consider is that if we hire staff and they become permanent employees, not permanent employees, but employees rather than contractors, when they leave, we have to pay unemployment, so that is also an, uh, uh, expense to that program. So, and, let's say if we had to hire, um, employees, about what would you expect the cost of that full-time employee would be, including benefits?
I would say, yeah, to, to be competitive in today's market, uh, there are jobs like this open all over, you're going to need to be at the base salary in the sixty to seventy thousand dollar range, when we add in benefits, we're getting up into the, you know, eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars per employee, possibly more. It's not cheap to get talent today and retain talent.
So, we're looking at four to five employees at around eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars a year?
Correct, correct.
For five years?
Correct, and, and, and my other concern is retention. So, I get you up to speed, you're doing great, and then you leave, now I got to start all back over again with a whole new employee, and that, that's going to, that's going to stop spending and stop getting these dollars out to the, those who need it.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any expenses? I mean, any expense? I've, I've been dealing with expenses all day today, um, any other comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I want to make a few observations. I appreciate what I've heard so far from my council colleagues and from both, Mr. Whitigan, um, Ms. Wilcox, and I didn't catch your name, but I might interact with you, um, and the guy from the firm. But when I look at the three-point-nine million for five years, we don't even know if we'll be spending money for five years. You know, we might have this money spent in two or three years. And so, my question is, whoever, and when the bid was put out, was it put out for five years, or can we pay one, two, three years at a time? Who knows the answer to that question?
So, if I understand your correction, or question correctly, uh, you, you are correct, we might not be spending money in years, say, four or five.
Four and five, I don't know, we might spend it in four and maybe not in five, but I mean, I'm looking at the cost.
Right, so, I think the key thing to focus on is this contract is not to exceed, so if we spend the, the dollars by year three, right, and the dollars are gone, they're putting the community, we got some great programs in place, ENY is gone, and they're not sending us bills for years beyond that.
You agree with that, sir? Okay, and so that's how that contract is looked at and wrote up?
Correct.
We see three-point-nine million, and, um, it might not even go that far. If anytime you want to say something, sir, and I got the floor, you're welcome to. Okay, go ahead, sir, I'm listening.
So, the way we did it typically, sorry, when we, when we bid these types of services, we understand that the first year to two will be the most active years, especially because, as you know, you're getting the funds in two twelve-month increments. Depending on the spending schedule, so how those funds are spent, following that, there'll be a closeout period, we will get, there will be federal interest in these funds at some point, so we expect audits of some type. The way we package these up is so that you are ready for that, so if it happens three, five, seven years from now, those things are put together. If it's done in two to three years, it's done.
Okay, spending enough time on that and getting an understanding, I want to say to my colleagues, um, on the council now, and to you too, Mr. Whitigan, and to you too, um, what's your name from Ernst &amp; Young?
It's, uh, Brian Jarzinski.
Brian what?
Jarzinski.
Jarzinski.
You can call me Brian.
All I have to do is get close, Mr. Jarzinski, but you say your first name was?
Brian.
Brian, yeah, I'm, I'm old, so you'll help me, but this is my thought pattern. We've had this money, Mr. Whitigan, since May the nineteenth. We've asked under the old council for this administration to come forward and at least engage in discussion, and this is really one of the first ones. But here we have a resolution that we're asked to either keep in committee or send the council for approval, and that's kind of not right with me, because for months we've asked the administration to come forward, and I don't think this council, or even the old council, on the first day of coming forward, if this is the first day, should be asked to move a three-point-nine million dollar resolution, because conversation is free. What I mean by conversation is free, some of this stuff should have been discussed, I shouldn't even have heard about it first on the news, I shouldn't hear about it first on Sam Riddle's show, I shouldn't hear about it first on fourteen-twenty AM. Now, I don't know what Ms. Fields heard, I don't know what other council people heard, but this is, to me, the first come-to-the-finance committee meeting and discuss. I'm enjoying listening to my colleagues, I'm enjoying listening to the logic and the service that could be provided for one, three, or five years, but I'm enjoying it in an open session, for me, the first time, as it relates to this money. And so, we'll see what we do and when we do it, and when we get to a meeting of the minds. That's all I'm going to say for right now.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I make a motion that, um, Resolution Two-One-Zero-Five-Four-Zero be put to Special Affairs.
Um, there is a motion for, but Councilwoman Lewis has not spoken yet.
Second?
Yes, is-
Is there a second?
Uh, I heard you, but I also got a note from, um, from the city clerk too-
Oh.
-that Ms. Lewis had not spoken yet on, um, on this resolution.
All right, so- So, as I go through, um, the bids, I do notice, well, for one, I just must reiterate that compliance is definitely needed, and as you stated, um, during, in this job climate, trying to hire someone in-house, um, train them, get them up to, to snuff, uh, is very risky, because we may, um, lose that employee again to this open job market, so I definitely, um, understand that point of view.
A point, point of, uh, information, um, Councilwoman Lewis, there is a motion for we do need to make sure that we, um, acknowledge, um, Councilwoman Eva Worthing's motion, um, can she get, or if you would like to withdraw for the moment to let her speak?
I'll withdraw until she's finished.
Thank you.
Okay, and so, um, keeping what I said in mind, um, I, I look now at the, the prices of the, the other bids, and it look, appears that Ernest Young, that they are in the middle, based off of the bids that we have received. So, they're not the lowest, yet they're not the highest, but they're right in the middle. Um, but I will suggest this to Mr. Whitigan, um, going forward, you know, it'd probably help the council digest the information, if you, uh, if you put this information in a, a table that states your criteria that you all use to, to vet the, these companies, and then, that way, we would be able to see what you saw, and, and it'd be more digestible, um, for the council, as we would go forward to make our decision.
I would be happy to do that.
All right, so, thank you, that's all.
Um, Ms.- thank you, Councilwoman. Um, Mr. Whitigan, I have a couple of questions. Uh, my colleagues have really gotten really, um, and I appreciate their in-depth questions, um, regarding the ARPA funds, and there seems to be a need that they're looking, that they want some more discussion. Um, my question is, when we talk about, um, the company Ernst &amp; Young, they're going to leverage more money, um, and we're hearing that one of the ways that they're going to leverage or leverage more money, uh, almost like a self, you know, finance or whatever, um, is that they're going to, um, go through FEMA. What other, um, funds are there, they're stating that they can, you know, that they're going to leverage, besides FEMA? Did they give you any other companies, or any other groups, or government organizations that they're going to get this money from?
Two, two ways, one, uh, FEMA's the largest, uh, you know, and for an example, just so the council's aware in public, for example, if we buy masks for city employees, that's all reimbursable through FEMA. Uh, there's a lot of companies not taking advantage of that. Two, as I, I had kind of alluded to earlier, the, the full legislation of ARPA is one-point-nine trillion. Within that, there are two or three buckets, I have an infographic I could email council, that, that carves out dollars just for small businesses, right? So, if a small, that business I kept referring to, Business X comes to us and says, "Hey, we need dollars to help, uh, remove lead-based paint around our window sills," right? Like, well, we can assess that, is that eligible for our funds, but then also talk with ENY and help that business tap into other buckets out there, so that it not only leverages more money for our spending, but leverages more money for the community's benefit too, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you. Uh, the other part, it seems like you're really concerned about compliance and compliance reporting, which, um, is, of course, extremely important. Um, my question too, you stated, um, your answer was, uh, if we had this in-house or with the city, it would take three to five employees, which, um, Vice President, Chair, Ms. Priestley stated that, um, came up with a figure about, I believe, eighty-five thousand for, per employee, uh, if we're doing three to five. Have you looked into this, and do you think that's feasible?
We have looked into it, and, and, I'll be honest, you know, I came from Lansing to, to Flint, right? So, we were looking at it in Lansing, too. Um, the, the issues that we ran into when I was assessing it here is, one, retaining the employees, two, the time it takes to even, you know, get, get the job posted, uh, get them, um, hired, first, just to get qualified people to apply, that's one problem I'm running into right now with a couple of positions I have open. Uh, also, bringing them up to speed, so making sure, you know, in the interview process, I'm going to have to grill them on all the rules and regulations to make sure they understand it, because you can sit there and interview and pretend you understand it, and they get on the job, and here we are, proposing resolutions that aren't in compliance. So, when you, when you take that all into effect, why, one of the biggest concerns was, when are we going to, how long is that going to take us to be able to start spending the dollars? For Ernst &amp; Young, or whatever company, that specializes in compliance and implementation, they're ready, they have the staff, the people, you know, their team isn't going anywhere, um, and they're ready to hit the ground running, so let's get this passed, and when council passes it, let's start shooting out other resolutions, work with you, you know, the administration wants to hear your input and work with the council to, to quickly get these dollars out into the community.
So, are we at the point now where we want to, because the money has been there since May nineteenth, so today, we quickly want to get the money out into the public? Is that what you're saying, in a more expeditious way, and because they have, and I get, you're saying it's like a one-stop shop? Um, they have the compliance, they have the people, they have the staff, um, and people are concerned in the community that the money has been there and it hasn't reached their hands, or reached, they haven't seen anything done with it, and other municipalities have. One of my concerns is that when we talk about, um, my colleague in the Eighth Ward- One of my concerns is that when we talk about my colleague in the eighth ward, that when we look at other communities who receive much more money but spent less dollars, I would like to look at this a little further. That, to me, is something, because if we can save some of the money and use this money to put back into the community, to help the people, as opposed to giving it to a company, that we may not see the money, but we're getting, we're being told that one of the reasons we're choosing this company is because they may probably be able to get us money back through FEMA, but there's no guarantee. Am I hearing no guarantee, is that correct?
I guarantee that they're going to be working hard to leverage additional dollars, but I can't guarantee you how much they're gonna leverage.
Okay, so we don't have a timetable or a chart that states how much money we will be getting back. We're gonna spend 3.9 million, but we don't know how much we're getting back, and there's no guarantee. I think residents in Flint, we've been through this before, we've been promised so many times that monies are coming, and the residents never see it. And that's the problem, it never reaches the residents, nor do they benefit from it. So that is one of my biggest concerns. I also like the fact that if we had jobs that we're creating for people who are working for the city, but we have to be responsible also, and the compliance is also important. Thank you, Mr. Whitigan.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question for...
Can I have the floor back, though? Because I had had it a while before, and then I gave up my motion.
I have the floor, thank you. My question is for you, sir. I'm sorry, I don't want to butcher your name.
No problem.
So my question for you is, and I'll try to keep it brief, what other municipalities are you working with on these ARPA funds?
Me personally?
Ernst &amp; Young.
Well, we have over 100 that we're working with.
For specifically these ARPA funds?
Yes.
And is your cost of 4.2%?
I mean, it varies, to be honest, depending on the level of services that we're providing.
So did we request more services, and that's why...
This is a little more full, because it includes some of the strategy piece, yes.
I'm sorry, it includes what?
It's a little more than some, a little less in some circumstances, because of some of the strategy component here. We have other communities that are also considering doing economic impact studies and so forth as part of their decision to spend the funds, so that would increase the fees, for example.
In all of this, what is your largest municipality that you're working with right now, for these ARPA funds specifically?
Well, I can't really share all the communities we're working with, but we're working at the state level as well. You mean the largest community that we're working for? I couldn't even tell you, but they're big ones.
So in the state of Michigan, are you working with Detroit, Lansing, Grand Rapids?
We are not working with Detroit.
Are you working with?
Not Lansing.
Grand Rapids?
Grand Rapids, I don't think has come out yet, looking for a consultant.
So Flint would be the biggest municipality in Michigan?
For me, in the state of Michigan, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Eva Worthing?
Thank you. I just want to point out, staff-wise, if anyone's thinking we're gonna do this in-house, we were without a CFO, an official CFO, for one year. We could not find a qualified candidate. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's a long time to go without seeing financial reports for this city. We didn't have the knowledge that we should have on this council for over a year, because we didn't have a qualified candidate. Is the financial department, or the finance department, is it fully staffed right now?
We are a lot stronger than we were, but not fully staffed. We are still looking for, you know, for example, backup to payroll. We don't even have a backup to payroll.
And how long has that job position been open or published?
It hasn't been, there hasn't been a backup to payroll since I started, and that's been about 92 days. And I don't believe the last CFO had a backup either.
So no one's posted for that position, or applied and been hired?
Right, it's posted, and we've had people not pass, you know, there's a test, and they haven't passed the test, or just no applicants?
No qualified applicants.
Correct.
I'd like to, if it's okay, call back Ms. Wilcox, because I'd like to ask her a question. So you're in charge of grants. What is the staff like for the grants that we do process?
So Planning and Development has a grants division, it's called Community and Economic Development, and that is the division that handles the entitlement grants for the city of Flint, which has a staff of 8.5 FTE. And they are all working on the grants administration for the city. So just to kind of compare that, we're talking about 8.5 FTE, which is almost 18,000 hours a year on about $5 million. So in comparison to a $100 million grant, we are spending about $890,000 a year. We can allocate up to 20% of our CDBG grant for administration, and we spend nearly $1 million a year on administering CDBG home and ESG. So just for comparison purposes.
We're spending more right now on the grants that we process on any given year than we are going to be on this compliance firm.
As I understand, I don't want to speak to ARPA, this is Mr. Whitigan, I would support everything he said. This is, just for comparison purposes, CDBG is, CDBG home and ESG, there's three entitlement grants that we administer, is approximately $5 million a year. So just compare, in comparison to this 100 million, approximately $100 million federal grant award.
Right. So eight and a half full-time staff to just process the grants that we get in the city normally, without hundreds of millions of dollars. Oh, I had a thought. Let me gather my thought. Oh, if you're not going to vote for this, and you think you have a better idea, maybe you do, then please inform me and the rest of our council members who you have lined up, who you've researched, and how you're gonna save us this money. Please do not vote no, and then have no backup plan, because our residents do want this money to get spent. And the mayor has said he will not release the funds until we hire a compliance firm. So anything we vote on, it will not be released. We need a compliance firm, and I absolutely 100% agree with that, because we cannot be paying this back.
One point of information, who said they would not release funds?
The mayor.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make clear what I thought I heard you say.
Administration will not be releasing the funds unless we hire a compliance firm. If you have one in mind, have done your research, great, please inform us. I don't know about Phoenix, Arizona. I can't, I wasn't given any links or what they're actually doing, so I have no idea if what Mr. Pfeiffer said is true. And if it is true, where's the, you know, facts to back up that they've spent this money? And it'll take years to know if they have to pay it back or not. We don't know if they're spending it correctly. So just saying that a city, a big city, hasn't hired a firm, so we don't have to as well, well, I kind of feel sorry for Phoenix, Arizona. They might be paying some of that money back, and I don't want to be in that position. So I haven't received any information here today that would sway me any other way as of yet. And that's why I want to make a motion to put this to Special Affairs. If you want to postpone it one more time to do your research, great, but let's not let this drop. So I'm making a motion to put this to Special Affairs.
There's a motion on the floor, can we get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion has been properly seconded.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, that motion has been made and properly seconded, the move that's just to Special Affairs. I don't think I'm in support of it right now, and I'll tell you why. This legislative branch controls the purse strings, Ms. Worthing, and I don't care what the mayor say. Well, I say we do. You think we don't, I think we do. And if the mayor is gonna put out in the public that he won't release funds that this council voted on, to me, that rises to the level of cause. And in the chart of the level of cause, we can remove elected and appointed officials. I listen to the people. I don't listen to what the mayor's saying, the blackmailing me into doing anything. That's what it amounts to. Don't put out you won't release no funds, if what you're saying is accurate. He won't release no funds until such and such. Poppycock. If we vote and ask Mr. Whitigan and/or the mayor, as we pull the purse strings to do certain things, fool around in just my one opinion, and don't let some things happen, it rises to the level of cause. That's for me, maybe not for you, but for me. We make law, and we have a lot to do with budgets and purse strings. We are the legislative branch. So I don't make decisions based upon what somebody's saying on a talk show or in the news. If the mayor want to talk to me like that, come stand at this microphone, he's welcome. I don't have to hear it from you, that's why I say, if what you're saying is accurate, I'm not gonna let that go out across the community. This is the day that I bet, and you sit on the council with me, and we haven't had this type conversation, the first day, I'm not moving facts. I wouldn't care if it was postponed, and I heard you say it, into the next Finance Committee meeting. Y'all can vote to move it to Special Affairs, y'all can vote to move it from Special Affairs to Council Meeting for approval. I'm only one vote, and I ain't ready yet. Because if what you're saying, the mayor is saying, I still want...
Point of information.
You have the floor, I wait.
Councilwoman Eva Worthing, you have the floor.
Mr. Whitigan, I think Mr. Mays missed that you had said the same thing earlier today, did you not, unless I misheard? I thought I heard you say the very same thing, that the funds were not going to be spent unless we had a compliance firm in place.
What point of, what was the question? What did you?
That Mr. Whitigan himself had mentioned earlier, I think you were walking around, that...
But I'll watch these on TV like you watch a football film.
I'm just asking, telling him to repeat it.
Well, you said walking around, I will continue, and I will watch them on TV like a football player watch a football film. Thank you.
That's well and good. I was just stating the facts, you were walking around. Mr. Whitigan, did you not say that the funds would not get spent unless a compliance firm was hired?
We are not inclined to introduce further resolutions for spending these dollars without a complacency firm in place, correct?
May I say this? A resolution don't just have to come from the mayor and the administration. Council can introduce resolutions with the assistance of legal department. And it don't take a compliance firm for me to give police and fire essential pay. Some of this stuff don't take a compliance firm, because it's clear. So all I'm saying, Ms. Worthing, is you've made a motion, and you've made it as a senior council person in the middle of this discussion, Ms. Priestley seconded it. I'm asking Ms. Priestley to chair, did you second it?
Yes.
I'm asking Ms. Priestley to chair in that hot committee. Just because the administration brings a resolution to this council, and this council is picking up where a last council met, I'm gonna tell you as a senior council person as well, this ain't been up here. The mayor ain't pranced up here and communicated. Mr. Whitigan has been here. I heard talk about Chief Financial Officer, I think it was Shelby Friar, that was less than a year ago, wasn't it? Wasn't Miss Friar here less than a year ago? Sure. She was here right before you came, right?
That is correct.
And you ain't been here but 120 days or less, correct?
That is correct.
So when I hear all this talk about, we've been out a CE, we've been out a CE CFO for a year, and all of this, some of it ain't relevant, because it ain't true. We screened Miss Friar. We put confidence in her, she left for some reason. So I don't want this public to get the wrong information. Mr. Calphany Stevens, can you come forward, because I've heard talk about business and economic development and allocations? Two things is going on here. One, compliance, the other is leveraging more money. But the leveraging more money is from other pots of money than what we talking about compliance. Y'all pick up on that? Did you pick up on it, Ms. Priestley, Ms. Lewis? If we want to hire this firm to leverage money out of other pots of money, that's a conversation. But see, when I heard Mr. Neely talking about using this money to leverage money, I thought you're gonna take 20 million and put it somewhere and make it deal up to 30 or 40. Now I'm hearing, Mr. Whitigan, that the conversation about leverages on the money is just really pulling from other pots of available money. That ain't what I had heard media-wise, and I'm not blaming y'all, I'm just telling you. Mr. Stevens, the reason I call you up, because these other pots of monies that I'm hearing from, have you heard what I heard? I think I heard right here, leverage some money for small businesses. You're familiar with those pots of money?
Partially, sir, yes.
What'd you say?
Partially, yes.
Partially, yes, you are. And so you're not fully familiar with the business money and the 47 million, and the other money, and other pots of money? You just partially? Maybe we need more time for you to become more or fully.
So to be, to be clear, councilman, what the American Rescue Plan Act is more than the funds that we are discussing tonight. And so when I say that I am partially familiar, there are trillions of dollars that are out there. Some of that money, I know of, I've heard of the different funds that you could apply to, but not all of that other money.
I hear you.
That's part of the reason why we would like to have a different firm. We don't have the capacity on staff to look into all those other funds.
I hear you. You think we got the capacity on council and council staff? Our capacity is similar to yours. My point is this, if you're partially, and I'm partially, before I make a decision to spend 4.9 million, I want to be three thirds partial or fully. That's where I'm at. This thing has come before me today, I've got people in here talking, and I've got a colleague moving it to Special Affairs. Special Affairs is a committee meeting, but it should last about an hour, and we should be out of there, and we should be in regular council meetings. And I don't know if it's five people ready to spend $4 million on the first conversation. And y'all might end up getting my vote, sir, I'm just not there yet. So I know, moving it to Special Affairs is the motion. I hated to see such an eager and fast motion made. I really do. I get in a council meeting, it's finally something that hit the table. You know what should have hit the table, in my opinion, Mr. Whitigan, before this resolution? The mayor himself. The mayor himself should have been up here talking about it. We should have been talking about it. We should have been talking about the categories in your head hot committee, Madam Chair, and in your finance committee, before we get action resolutions. But you know, some of my colleagues are smarter than me, and maybe that ain't too hard to do. But my point is this, you won't see resolutions come to me, talked about in the media, played with like we a team, and then I'm hearing, what won't happen if we don't do this? Maybe somebody mischaracterizing something, but that ain't the way to talk to Councilman These monies have sit there. Now all of a sudden... These monies have sit there, now all of a sudden it's a rush? I took an oath of office and I talked to a lot of people, and my job is to help bu- bust it loose. Help bust it loose, it didn't sit here too long. But I know some of the stuff is simple, Mr. Whitigan. If we did essential pay, thank you, Mr. Stevens, if we did essential pay for police and fire, that ain't a no-big-brainer. Money won't have to go back, it can be anywhere from five, zero to 25,000. I might want them to get 5,000 before Christmas, but I might not just want police and fire, sir, I might want, there's 528 workers in the city. I might want you to tell me if they're in compliance to receive that money. 1.1 million, up to 3.9 million. That's where I like the answer to the question, up to. But I'm here to tell you, this mayor and this administration will be barking up the wrong tree, Ms. Worthen, if they, if I'm hearing right. Don't tell me what you won't do when you got nine, you, you can shriek, you can strut. You can shriek, you can strut. I'm just telling you me. Me. I will not be talked like that too publicly by this administration. I'm gonna do what I think is right for the people. And if I get a vote, or this council vote, to move on certain financial matters and they don't move, I'm gonna ask for a public hearing. And that public hearing will be held in the public, and then we'll see if folks gonna hole up millions of dollars that this elected body then said move on. So I'll wait to see, five votes sent it to special affairs, it ain't the end of the day. What happens when it get there? Do it move forward or come backwards? I ain't there yet. That motion to me was quick and premature on the first time we discussing, in my opinion, the 47 million in this way. And I'll tell you what I mean, Ms. Worthen. I'll look at the resolution dated June the 14th, signed by Angela Wheeler, Kate Fields, Mr. Neely, you know what that was? To receive the funds. It's in the packet. When I say the first time, I'm talking about spending the funds. That resolution, June 14th, was to receive, if I'm reading it right. 47 million this past May, and another 47 million this coming up May. What happens, Ms. Worthen, if you don't pull five votes here today out of seven? You gotta be very careful when you put motions out there that could fail and kill themselves for 30 days. And so I've discussed what I have. You got the floor, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to clarify, I made a motion, uh, to move it to special affairs. That way, if there were still some questions, uh, they could be answered and we could move it to council. If that's not the will of this body, they can postpone it to the next committee meeting, that's how it works. There's no quickness or rushing or an agenda, I just literally would like to move on, it sounds like we're good with our questions, uh, and, and make a motion, and let's see where this goes. If, if the five votes aren't there, then we'll vote to postpone to the next committee meeting.
Councilman Mays, are you done?
Um, I just, you at was talking to me.
You'd given her, given council.
Yeah, I just, and, and you see a way out, but my thing is, we gotta be careful when we jump out there sometime with motions. This might not be the case, but I'm just trying to talk along the way. We gotta be careful.